Jack and Paul. No news, good news with HED.
Yeah, good, perfect.
I heard some folks who are super excited to see them out on the rail trail and biking around town.
Yeah, we got an e-bike.
Oh, that e? Good, awesome.
And they've been patrolling the rail trail, they've been doing bike patrols in town. They were at graduation. We got some good feedback, but there was some presence at graduation. Yeah, they're doing good work.
Yeah, mighty big smiles on their faces there, right? How do you like that?
As well they should.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, excellent. Next up.
I know that St. J's having a lot of problems on the rail trail over that one. Campers.
Oh.
And I think that having a presence on the rail trail helps.
Yes.
Rail trail is a busy place.
Yeah.
Is it?
Hardwick's a busy place, sitting out here.
Yeah, it really is.
It's really a busy place, I gotta say. You guys was all right. I got it being busy. Now we'll see who's right about the maintenance.
Well, give them some time.
I give them, I'm very happy.
They've got to be responsive to stop.
Yep, they get out there, they're hitting it hard. No, they're on it right now, so.
The governor's gonna ride from Swan to A.J. in July.
Yep.
Do a stop here.
Yeah, we need to queue him lunch or something.
Walk, just a walk.
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes, oh, ten minutes.
The number of stops he's made, I don't know how he's gonna make it in one day.
You can do it.
He's an avid cyclist.
That's not a bad ride.
No.
I'm sure he's got an e-bike.
That's good, so I'm gonna move us to the Hardwick Electric report. We have Matt Smith.
I'm sure he's not gonna have egg on his face on that deal. He's got too much.
Hang on. Hardwick Electric will be installing the AM electric car charger behind the building in the next week or so. So we'll see what happens. Not at all sure I want to be used. Number two, the Hardwick Electric committee has been resisting the state's request that we move towards automatic meters. They place all of these into the automatic ones that could be read remotely. Extremely expensive, there's some money offered, but we're thinking, we don't need this, and we'll see what happens. Third, we, after ten or almost eleven years of no rate increases, made a request for a large thirteen percent increase to the Public Utilities Commission and the state, and we returned down. They planned this, I think it's six and a half percent. So that's going to curtail a lot of activities. They seem to want us to borrow money from the banks rather than fund things ourselves, which drives us nuts, but in any case, we'll have to deal with it. In another year, we would be allowed to have a two percent increase without acceptance, without even going to the Public Utilities Commission. We'll see what we're gonna do, but six and a half rather than thirteen percent hurts. End of report.
That's a final decision from them?
Yeah, I don't think there's any way to appeal the Public Utilities Commission. They are proud of money on utilities.
And that, when does that go into effect, the six and a half percent?
Right away.
Already has, right? Didn't they say that?
We actually have added, on the assumption that we would get some of it, to the last bill or two.
Yeah.
So now we have to put through the paperwork of returning some of those monies to the user of electricity, and I guess machines will do all of that out of the new direction.
Matt, what's the incentive to go to automatic?
It's just part of everything wants to be automatic these days.
The guy selling the automatic meters.
Yeah, I mean, there's great analysis of savings.
And software.
And we don't quite believe all the savings. Believe it or not, the obvious one is the guy who goes around reading all the meters all the time, but even that job is not completely gone, so we're not convinced that there's much savings. There is in cities where it's really easy to read the meters, but I don't know, I mean...
So there are also places in the U.S. and in the world where, when you have automatically your meters, it allows you to rate different rates based on the time of day?
That's the big argument.
But don't you...
That you'll be able to have different rates during the time of the day. That doesn't really apply to us since we're, what, ninety percent residential and a little bit of this and that. If you have large commercial users, and they have all kinds of different possibilities, maybe you could work something out. We're not convinced that there's much savings at all for us.
Wouldn't you still have to buy the same amount of power?
Yeah.
To cover...
Yeah, but sometimes...
There's really no safety...
There is, because you, well, if you can incent people to use, do their dishes and laundry when the power is not a good time.
You buy cheaper power.
Right.
So anyway, that, that's complicated.
Yes.
Were the other, I know there's several other utilities asking for rate increases as well.
Yeah.
Was everyone given like half of what they asked for, or do you know?
I don't know the answer, Danny.
I just, just, yeah, go ahead.
I know that all the other, most of the other...
Oh, so it's right here.
Mic's here.
We can hear you.
I'm, oh, Mike. I'm joining in because I failed to get Matt some stocking points for you, so I'm here to help him out.
He's doing it.
Oh, he did a good job, three points.
Three good points, and now you blow my cover wire. So I understand what little I thought, Danny, you were wondering about how the other utilities fared with their rate filings?
Yeah, just, just in general, was it, everybody got half because, yeah, just interested in that, that's all?
Yeah, so the municipal utilities in general that have filed, that have got to the settling point on their cases, a vast number of our rate increase dollars is, and was, for operating capital increases. So we all, as municipals, try not to incur debt and to operate within our annual budget, even with our capital expenses, and carry those, you know, for example, if we were having a rough year for the first six months of the year, we would just backpedal a little on a capital project or two to make it through the year and ship that work to the next year. And that's, that is not the way the Department of Public Service wants us to do business. They have made a clear shift and a clear push that they want us to go do, you know, a capital project X or Y or Z, and do it all right away and incur debt to do that. So whereas, for example, we did the big conversion in the Hardwick Circuit, the Hardwick Substation and certain areas, and we did that over three, almost four years, working great, you know, we didn't have to borrow any money, but that's not how the Department of Public Service wants us to do it. They want us to go out and borrow the dollar, spread that dollar out over, you know, what if we invested, we made fifteen or twenty years, which is directly in conflict with the way the municipals have done business for a very long time. So instead of the project costing a dollar, now it's gonna cost a dollar plus all the interest over those years.
Yeah.
So we have a lot to look at, we have a lot to talk about, you know, that's not, I don't know how we're going to transition into that, because even with the rate increase they gave us, if we had that last November up through today, we could still be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the hole. So that increase they gave us is not gonna help, it's gonna help, but it's not gonna resolve our financial situation, and we can't incur debt, you know, if we can't pay the bills we have now. So they're trying to put us into a catch 22, and my prediction is we're gonna have to file another rate increase right away, but I haven't even discussed this with the commissioners yet, so this is all kind of new news.
Do you, thank you, Mike. Do you, Mike, do you feel that, this is...
I'm having trouble hearing whoever's talking.
Sorry, this is Eric. Do you, do you feel that the commission just didn't understand your rate case, or was it not presented clearly, or do you have any indication about why they are doing this?
Yeah, they have a couple of, like, key business equations and perspectives that they use. The primary one is called the TIR, and TIR stands for Times Interest Earn Ratio. So the more interest you pay, the more they believe they can justify a rate increase. And since we have essentially no debt, which I've been working on getting us debt-free since I joined HED twelve years ago, and we would have been debt-free in 2024, but we didn't quite make it, but they want us to have that debt, and if you have a Times Interest Earn Ratio that's high, they'll put all that interest right into your grades, and that's what they just did with Washington Electric Co-op. Washington Electric Co-op went in for a fifteen or fourteen-plus percent rate increase, and they got twelve percent of it, because they have a huge amount of debt and their interest earned ratio is really high.
Huh, yeah, so Paul, sounds like a good one.
Yeah, Paul Fitch here, I don't know if you can hear me, but I think, my understanding, one of the reasons they're doing that is because they want the people paying the rates today to be the ones getting the funding. So if they pay it all twenty years ago, then those people pay for the benefits that rate payers get over the next twenty years. And whether that makes sense or not is another question, but that's part of what goes into that equation.
That's absolutely a correct call, and I agree with that philosophy, but we aren't spending the money over, you know, right now. We stretch that money out, and our capital budget remains roughly, you know, four to six hundred thousand dollars a year. We aren't running out and spending a whole bunch of operational money. So yes, the philosophy, I totally agree with that, you know, why would I buy, for example, a substation transformer for how many dollars, it's gonna last thirty or thirty-five years, and spend, pay for it right now? I wouldn't, that doesn't make sense. But if I'm doing a hundred and fifty thousand dollar capital projects and upgrade two miles of the circuit to eliminate losses, et cetera, et cetera, that's something that I think we should be doing as part of our operational business, not incurring debt for it. So it's a, it's a major shift in business philosophy that they're pushing on us, and we're just kind of taking the first step with this rate increase and heading in that direction. So that's, that's it, and I should hope they do.
Okay, well, thank you for the explanation. Appreciate it.
Good luck, Mike, you're gonna earn it now, buddy.
That's right. So I don't know if Matt talked to you, but our biggest driver right now is with costs, overruns, is our purchase power expenses, and those are being driven, and I'm not sure if I or anybody else advised all of you about the Mystic Station, but the world, the whole market of natural gas has driven the ISO New England position of heavy, extensively heavy dependence on natural gas to the point where we got hammered for the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar, unbudgeted, unexpected, unexplained cost increase so that ISO New England could run their Mystic Station, which I think is, you know, not an illuminating station, but it's in Boston Harbor, and it's basically a gas pipeline where they can pull in a ship full of natural gas and support the gas system, the gas power generating stations down there during the cold weather. So that, those costs, normally we can buy the hour of market power for maybe six cents a kilowatt hour, or sixty dollars a megawatt hour, fifty or sixty dollars, and during the months of December, January, and February, and part of March, our costs for a megawatt hour were over three hundred dollars because of Mystic Station. So we're in the process with, that's along with all of the New England utilities filing, FERC filing, with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, trying to get most, if not all of that money back. So that'll probably be a two-year process, but we're working on that.
So keep installing the heat pumps.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's here for solar power.
Right on, Matt.
Yeah, good work, all right.
Good work right there, I like it.
All right, next, thank you to Hardwick Electric. Next up, select board to consider appointment of Amy Rosenfeld for Equity Committee. We had a letter of interest.
I just wanted to mention from the Equity Committee that Amy came to our last meeting and met with everybody and participated, so she's been to the meeting and provided the letter. I'm happy to answer any questions if we can.
I make the motion to appoint Amy Rosenfeld to Equity Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, item two, select board to read a statement in support of Juneteenth.
So this is, I'm not so much an item, there's no action that needs to be taken, I don't think so, but we wanted to, the Equity Committee was talking about how Juneteenth is now a federal holiday, which is next Monday, the nineteenth, and how it would be appropriate since now, for example, the offices are closed Monday in recognition of Juneteenth, that we wanted to just read a little bit about why it's a federal holiday. I think last year, it had just been announced, it had just become a federal holiday, so we didn't really, I don't think we even had the town offices closed last year that I can remember. And we also wanted to say from the Equity Committee that we hired the Peace and Justice Center to come last month, and they provided a training for some town employees, and a part of that training was talking about the history of Juneteenth, and then also just about racism and all kinds of different things. So I was going to, if it's okay with everybody, just read some segments.
Oh, good, thank you.
From the proclamation.
Okay.
Yes, excerpts. So this is a proclamation of Juneteenth Day, of observance of Juneteenth Day, written by President Joe Biden in 2022. I'm just gonna read a little bit about the history and then just a little bit about the day. So, "After the Union Army captured New Orleans in 1862, slave owners in Confederate states migrated to Texas with more than a hundred and fifty thousand enslaved black persons. For three years, even after President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, enslaved black Americans in Texas remained in brutal bondage and morally and illegally deprived of their freedom and basic dignity. On June 19th, 1865, over two years after President Lincoln declared all enslaved persons free, Major General Gordon Granger and Union Army troops marched to Galveston, Texas to enforce the Emancipation Proclamation and free the last enslaved black Americans in Texas. Those who were freed from bondage celebrated their long overdue emancipation on June 19th. Today, our nation commemorates Juneteenth, a chance to celebrate human freedom, reflect on the grievous and ongoing legacy of slavery, and re dedicate ourselves to rooting out the systemic racism that continues to plague our society as we strive to deliver the full promise of America to every American." Just gonna skip one paragraph. "Juneteenth is a day to reflect on both bondage and freedom, a day of both pain and purpose. It is in equal measure a remembrance of both the long, hard night of slavery and subjugation, as well as a celebration of the promise of a brighter morning to come. On Juneteenth, we remember our extraordinary capacity to heal, to hope, and to emerge from our worst moments as a stronger, freer, and more just nation. It is also a day to celebrate the power and resilience of black Americans who have endured generations of oppression in the ongoing journey toward equal justice, equal dignity, equal rights, and equal opportunity in America." If you're interested in reading the whole proclamation, it can be found on the White House website.
And we can have it attached to our minutes.
And it's attached to the minutes, but I thought that was the most relevant.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla.
That's great. And the nineteenth is, when did you say Monday?
It's next Monday.
Is it going to be an anniversary holiday or a Monday holiday?
Like continually? It's a good question. I'm not sure.
We'll find out next year.
Washington's birthday is not...
Right, it happened on a Monday this year, so.
Yep.
Right.
But no, that's a, that's a really good question.
I would think it would be a traveling...
What, a Monday one?
Yeah, it'd be perfect, 'cause it's not, like, the Monday ones are like the six big ones or whatever.
It's like Memorial Day and Labor Day.
This is like, the nineteenth is a specific day.
We'll find out, we'll find out next year?
Yeah, we will.
Yeah, Martin Luther King Day.
Gabland's legal in Vermont now, so let's take a little fool. Eric, Gabland's legal in Vermont, let's take a little fool.
It is legal?
Yes.
I thought it was only good for you five, I thought you had to use the Vermont, whatever...
You worked on it a long time.
Oh, I've been asleep. All right.
Did, no, did the governor just pass gaming, a gaming law last year?
Internet gaming.
Oh, use your phone.
Yeah.
Save money. Like the sports betting and stuff, I think.
Oh, yeah, it is like a sport.
I just wanted to add really quickly for the Juneteenth, too, the Equity Committee is also working on some community engagement projects for the summer and the fall, and there is a celebration of Juneteenth at the Old Stonehouse Museum in Brownington, if anybody's interested, so thank you for having us read that.
Thanks.
How did that help Equity?
Great, so, yeah, so the, do you want me to talk about that in...
Select board report.
In select board reports?
Don't forget.
I'm writing it down.
All right. Item three is LAMP. We need to, every year, we review and approve our local emergency management plan.
I'm a little nervous that two of our three LAMPers are MIA.
I know where it's located.
Jesus, I don't know if that's a good plan for missing.
Don't be a monster, dawg. Not to worry.
Mary show up in an emergency.
Yeah, just kidding, guys.
Yeah, so we do this every year, and we have some dedicated town employees who fill these really important roles.
By May first, every year, it says right here.
Yeah.
Make a motion, do we have to make a motion?
Yeah, to approve the...
Make a motion to approve the local emergency management plan for 2023, as documented in our agenda packet.
Second.
Any discussion or questions about those people and their roles? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Do we need to sign it?
The main one.
The required elements?
Yeah.
It's just you, Eric.
Chair.
Just you, and then at the bottom, I think.
Just for the top, I think.
That's where he gets the best pen.
Next, next item after LAMP, item four, select board to discuss the logistics of the East Hardwick Fire District using the Town of Hardwick's Unique Entity Identifier, UEI, for the purpose of applying for an assessment management grant, AMP. And this is a sort of a technical or logistics thing.
I, I just wanted to have a discussion about it and making sure everybody's aware of it.
It's our first step in getting a big IOU.
So I didn't feel comfortable making the call myself.
So just to, does somebody wanna, somebody, do you want me to recap what I understand about what's happening, or do you wanna just give a quick overview of like why they're looking for this?
So the fire district was required to chlorinating, and I don't know, I don't, I haven't been to a fire district meeting, so, and then they're just trying to get a better idea of some steps to move forward.
Yeah.
And I know that they're doing good work. They've had several large meetings, their annual meeting, and they're just looking to make improvements.
And the reason they need this, the reason they need the UEI is to, is to...
To...
Apply for funding?
For funding, yeah.
For a study to, to help them figure out?
It's an asset...
Asset management or something?
Assessment management, AMP. I don't know what that is.
Oh, it's a, right, assessment management, so that's gonna be, but the product should give them, get money to help them assess what they have and where, how to move forward from.
So, I have a lot to say on this one.
Wow.
So do I.
Can we just back up for briefly?
Yeah.
Because people that live in Hardwick, not in East Hardwick, may have no idea that East Hardwick is not on the same water system.
Well, and a lot of people aren't on any water system.
Right, so they have a different thing going on over there that they've, yeah, so just to back up to that, so people understand that.
Why don't we start with Wiz?
Yeah.
And maybe she can give us some history on the fire district first.
Okay.
And why it was created and...
Without fires.
Ladies first, Danny. It was created by the select board. A fire district is a municipal entity that is created by the select board. Hardwick Village became a village created by the state, and that, as far as I can tell, is the major difference between a fire district and the village. The village has since re-merged with the town. The fire district remains distinct from the town in the boundaries that were established for the fire district in about 1912, I don't remember exactly what the date was. The reason the fire district formed was that they needed, in this little village of East Hardwick, they finally came to the point where individual wells wouldn't do it, they needed to create a water system. And so they drew up a petition for twenty people, which is what the law requires, they said, this is what we want to do, they took it to the select board, the select board approved it, they created their, they created the prudential committee, they did the organizing meeting, and they ran themselves as this little municipal entity until now, with varying degrees of professional behavior. The fire district has a new board, and they see that the water system needs a lot of improvements, and they're trying to, they're actually trying to do a lot of backing and filling of a situation that, that has been allowed to go downhill.
Potentially deferred maintenance.
A lot of deferred maintenance, right. So my question is, why don't they have their own number? Is it because this grant that they're going for is time-specific, and therefore they have a deadline to meet that they can't meet before they can get a number from the state? Because they really need their own number, they are their own little municipal entity. And who is, who is this grant coming from? You know, how, what's the deadline? How long is it gonna take? And why don't they have their own numbers? Those, those are my two real questions. Okay, Danny, I see to you.
No, that was one of my, we're thinking a lot of the same lines, anything that, so it sounds like this is an entity of in itself at this point.
It is.
The select board has never had any discussion with them, no power over them, no authority. So if they're to do this water project, then it's gonna need to be done either on their own or...
They have an engineer.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but I'm talking about the district, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So they're gonna need a number, they're gonna have to get their own funding, they're not gonna, you know, the first step of this project is get your own, when I, you know, if I needed to get a grant, the first thing I had to do is get, you know, first thing you gotta do is get your IAN, first thing you gotta do is get your SIM, your DUNES, your DNU, you've gotta do that for your own entity, not borrow someone else's. If it was a one-time deal, and this was gonna fix it, and it was, you know, we were helping them out, but this is the first step of a very, very long, inexpensive project.
Now, if these grants, you know, it takes six months to get this number, and this grant has a six-week deadline, maybe once.
Yeah, I'm not sure that they're grant, you know, I'm not sure a grant's even what I wanna do, but if I was...
They should be able to make an arrangement with the grant board.
Yeah, but I'm not, you know, I've been on ranking committees for years, and the first thing I would say is why don't they have their own number, why they might have somebody else's?
Did they, did they talk to you at all about that?
Not the time-specific. I know they've been in conversation with the state about the grant. I don't know the timetables, but I can ask.
I mean, we're gonna have to, I think, right off soon, decide where the select board is gonna play into this as far as this project, 'cause I said for a few years now that they had a dilapidated water system, and, you know, I believe that if it's part of Hardwick, then Hardwick should be part of it, just like our system is down here in this village, but, you know, I don't know. I'm not the one making that decision, I'm just saying, there's big questions here, because this is...
Right, they're, they're valid questions.
Yeah, like, I don't know how many houses, how many users, how many miles, how many gallons. We don't know nothing about this thing at all.
So, from my point of view.
Other than I do know that it's in really, really bad shape.
It does seem though that, that, at least with OP, as far as I know, it seems like we're treating the two water systems very similarly right now, from like, um, you know, we have the, the water system in the vi- village that is its own enterprise fund that, that the select board. We do, but we control it separately from all of their town funds. And we, um, when we use town resources, we bill the water users for those town resources. But, we have, our town manager helps, you know, make sure that everything happens that's supposed to happen, and, and, you know, and if somebody has trouble, they can call.
Right, but this is a different board, a different entity.
But you've been in communication with them about the, in similar ways in East Hardwick about, these are things we can do, and these are things you should think about, and so I do think we're supplying, supplying similar support, it's just that, it's a different system.
And it, to, one thing that Wiz was saying just barely, I think it would be, maybe it's just a question of having more information about their timeline and their system of grants, because if, if the ask was, we're in the process of applying for our own E, own EIN number, there's this one-time opportunity that we need you to be a fiscal agent for, but we plan to have our own number by September, that's a really different ask than just asking us to, and then we'd also would have an agreement about that and what, you know, how, because ultimately, we are responsible for putting our number on something, so it's something that we have to think about. Even though East Hardwick is a part of Hardwick, as a separate entity, we have to take that into consideration. So, I don't know if there's a way to have somebody from the fire district come to a next meeting. I don't know what the timeline is like, like if they need this immediate.
We don't need another lighting department. It's, you know, another board that, that didn't come out right.
Okay, so, I, so it sounds like we all have the same questions, and we all have the same concerns, and I think frankly, it's not in the water di- the, the fire district, number one, it's not in their best interest to not have their own number.
Right.
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 Because they are, yeah.
I mean, I just, what I, my comments are, I think they need to get their own number and start thinking seriously about how we're gonna solve this.
Well, and it's timely, because they have this whole village plan they've processed, and that can be part of it. That's.
That will be part of it.
That will definitely be part of it.
It would be great if we could get some information, like, how many users, what, it's in here?
Oh, no, I'm writing it down.
Yeah, but you know what I'm saying, what they, cause people are paying something now, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, who does the billing, and they have people?
It's the fire district.
It's the fire district people.
It's all run, I mean, it's all they name.
Right.
They run it and do.
I mean, I know, the other part I know about it is I used to help Eddie go up and.
We're supplying.
Help fix them, put the black light back together.
We're, we're.
The water's delicious in East Hardwick, it's really good.
No, it's great water, but you know what I mean, I know the system, that was late, so we were thinking.
That's what I mean, we're offering.
Better to make this decision, so we can really do anything to.
Yeah, but I think OP's taking all the questions down, and none of these are surprise questions.
I, I think it's gonna be, I don't believe the, I don't know, but my guess is, the fire district is not gonna have the financial capacity with its users in order to support the amount of money that's needed to create a new system. So the fire district itself isn't, generate, doesn't generate enough revenue to fix the problem. So therefore, the town is gonna have to help. I don't believe for a minute that, how many people are on the system in East Hardwick? Thirty?
Eighteen.
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 I'm pretty sure.
How are you gonna pay for a nineteen million dollar water project?
That's why they need to get the grant.
Grant.
Well, I know that, but you gotta sustain that water system.
You're right.
A fire district has the power to bond.
You gotta pay, Mike, I'm not talking about just getting it built, I'm talking about the same problem we're having right now down here.
They're now trying to run a sewage plant, which is a lot more complicated if John Jewett is to be.
Well, you know, you never like to hear my doom and gloom, but. You guys are always around, I'm hearing my friend.
Listen, I, they have, the fire district has the power to do everything that the town does, including front of bond. And I suspect that they are bound with the same limits that a town bond is, which is twelve times the grant list. And a fire district uses the same grant list that the assessor.
Yeah, I, I understand that.
The question in my mind is not one of, can they afford it? We don't know what the grant list is, but twelve times that may actually, the question is, can they get the fire district residents to approve it?
Well, that, I agree with you there. Yeah, that's kinda what I'm saying. There's eighty people there. I drove down range, I drove through East Hardwick the other day, thinking about this, and looked at the, the, the buildings in East Hardwick and the people that live there, and I'm thinking.
They're not gonna vote for nineteen million.
They vote for our water system.
So, well, no, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, but they're expensive right now. But they're also, but the district's also in a pickle, because they're being required to chlorinate, which means they have to change their system anyway. So they're kinda like between, they're between a rock and a hard place, because if the state's requiring them to chlorinate, which means they have to make improvements to their, it's this, it's this, they have, you know, if they're gonna do that, then they have to get these systems in. So, I think Danny's right, I think it's a bigger conversation of how I, you know, I don't know how the Town of Hardwick would support it right now, off the top of my head, but I don't know.
Well, I don't think they'd support it, but I don't think they'll be involved in.
Right.
And do what we can, because it's gonna be, it's gonna be a task beyond just the eighty water users.
Right, we're gonna need the town manager to understand the issues and to help them navigate.
And no matter what happens, I might got feeling this, is the, the select board and the town are gonna have to be a partner at the very minimum.
And so I'm wondering if they ought not to dissolve the fire district and become an enterprise fund, the same as the South Hardwick.
But the, but the, it leaves, it leaves the same thing, because this water system has to support itself.
Right.
Exactly, and they can too.
So, for a guy that's just, just dealt with being, dealing with a board, working for a board, there's a lot of more, you know, management of our system is much better than the management of the fire district. People changing, boards changing, everybody having a personal meltdown, walking away. All new people, I mean, it's just so many factors to the management of, of something like that.
So you're saying it could add stability?
It would add major stability to the system and make it much, much, much cheaper to run if you just.
But that's really a decision of the fire district.
My fire district has to.
Well, I would be, but the town, I think, needs to be ready for that discussion, right?
Sure.
I think so.
I mean, I don't know, I, I'd struggle to see any scenario where this little fledgling water district is gonna be able to, reservoir, all new piping, all those services.
No, the reservoir is fine.
Just.
We don't need all new piping.
All right.
Reservoir is fairly new.
Okay.
It's the source there, that they need to do the water on.
So maybe it's not that, maybe it's only a couple hundred thousand.
So, but they need, so, anyway, but back to this question of borrowing the town identifier number, seems like, what I'm hearing is, I mean, that we, we would encourage them to definitely apply for their own. If there's some time limit that, like, they're applying for their own, they're in process, but they need to hit a grant deadline, then they need to come back and tell us that.
Okay. Um, I just wanna state one thing, is that I made a pledge to make sure that they have water. I told them that I wouldn't, I would make sure that they're, they have water coming to their tap, and then they all, they are also residents of the Town of Hardwick.
Yeah.
So we can't forget that.
No.
So, if we, if we delay this, then you think they're?
Did I just say that?
We, oh, I don't, I don't know, I wasn't listening.
I probably believe.
I just wanna, I just wanna make that point, that they, they are kind of.
Right.
But I think what I've heard the select board say is basically that we actually wanna commit more to this project than just providing our number, that we actually wanna partner in making this happen, which I think is more impactful than just saying use our number, like, maybe that means a special meeting.
Our number is just not, it doesn't make any sense, the thing.
Ultimately, it won't help, because they need their own in order to be able to.
Yeah.
But if they're, if they're open to some support from us.
Yeah, I have no issues with them doing it all on their own, I just think it's gonna be quite a task.
Yeah, you too.
And I think it's totally, well, my, my, I, without thinking about it too thoroughly, but just having just what you said, like, yeah, why, we wouldn't want residents to have a, be out of water because their system failed in our town.
When you say eighty people, OP, you mean eighty property?
I think it's eighty connections.
Eighty connections.
Yeah. Could be wrong, though, that's just a number that stuck in my head.
It sounds probably like that, right.
So maybe a next step could be, if they provide us a timeline, if there is, like, a, we need this grant by August.
Guessing.
Yeah, we are.
Maybe, maybe just more information for our next meeting.
I'm sorry there wasn't somebody here from the fire district.
I, I invited John, it was just a little short notice for him, he had some things going on tonight. I'll find out, I think they have a meeting, um, was it second Monday, second Tuesday?
So we, we made a motion to allow to use it with the, uh?
No.
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 All right.
There was no motion made.
No.
And.
We're gonna find out more.
We're, we're asking for more information.
Okay.
Good. So carry on, keep helping, let's try to get that sorted somehow, some way. All right, I'm gonna move this to item five, select board to review, review bids for, and select a fuel vendor for fiscal year twenty-four. Authorize town manager to execute any applicable contracts. We had only two bids despite actually reaching out to five companies. Um, but they're good bids, and they're fixed, which we did not get last year, but last two times, or was it just this last year that we didn't?
Last year.
On the recommendation of the town manager's office, I would make the motion that we purchase our heating oil and propane from Irving and our off-road diesel from Dead River.
On-road diesel.
On-road diesel, sorry. On-road diesel, yes.
Second.
Two seconds. Excellent.
Quiet second, quiet first.
And, uh, any discussion on that, those bids?
There is a penalty.
This past year, who did you have? Who did we have?
Irving.
Irving, so we're staying with them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I just wanna add the propane, uh, that comes from the new boiler at the waste water plant.
Comes from the?
The new.
The new port.
The new port, cause we have a new boiler down there.
So we need a pro.
But we also have propane at the damn garage now.
Okay.
As of, a few years ago, we had a couple hanging, moving their tongue.
Right.
Yeah. Um, yeah.
Aren't we gonna do one of those?
All right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, we are building a new town garage.
That's not, that's.
Coming, coming soon.
Just writing it down.
Um, all right, so motion on the table.
Oh, Ruth Fire Station.
To go with what really are the, just the low bids here, uh, Irving for heating oil and propane, Dead River for on-road diesel. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you to the folks who brought us those bids. Um, next is item six, select board to review bids and select a fire station roof replacement vendor for FY twenty-four, and authorize town manager to execute any applicable contracts. Danny's motion for the previous thing also authorized the town manager to.
Yes, to sign off contracts, absolutely.
Just to clarify.
I think, that's, that's what goes on a mall.
Uh, yeah, all right. So, in this case, looks like we have, I read two, I don't, I'm not there yet, but I've read there we have two bids, right?
Yeah.
Are two. Um, and did we, did someone, do we have?
Substantially different.
Substantially different, so do we have references from either of these? You do, okay, great.
Did I see the references for the?
Franklin?
Franklin King roofing, just cause I've never heard of them.
Now is the time.
I'd like the price, but.
Rob, you know it's considered high, high, high.
They do a lot of high-end roofing stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, I did like those, surprised there was only thirty grand difference between standard C and asphalt shingles.
I know.
You know, but that's, I mean, it's, standard C's thirty-five year manufacturer warranty.
Yeah.
Lifetime warranty on shingles, you know what that means?
I know this Franklin King.
I don't mean that to mean.
As you said.
Just the references, I got.
Oh.
Have we contacted them?
Did somebody call the references?
Not yet.
Well, wait, no. I mean, I like his number, it's just.
I think that, I mean.
There's a lot of, however, in this, you know, if this turns out, if this.
Oh, but that's true in the other one too, if you.
Yeah, this is not gonna cost, this roof is not gonna cost, it's gonna cost more than twenty-seven, eight, because of, we don't know what was. The highway needs to be changed out.
Rod under there.
Yeah.
But that's the case in both these bids, right? The, the rod roofing has a line also that's, uh, any rod nor degreasing decking will be repaired, replaced on a time and materials basis.
Yeah, yeah, so there's no difference there, really.
So, but.
There should be that much, there should be that much, cause we did it all that last time.
I figure, to be safe, another ten thousand dollars, yeah.
On that low number, I would say, that number worries me.
Are we, yeah, I want, somebody needs to call references, I think, first.
I mean, it, it's good deal, but that's not much money today, it's, well, that's a big roof, but. I'll tell you what, there's some guys down there in that, where I'm working in Berry, they're doing those houses down there. Them boys put roofs down, house, they do a house in about half a day, whole house.
Yes.
Do they work for Franklin?
They don't speak a lot of English, but they really put the shingles down.
Just a question on, um, the references.
Girls, dad, his family, mother, daughter.
We get, how do you wanna handle this, cause we don't need it until July.
Oh.
And I don't want to put these guys off.
Right, so, do you wanna?
Put it in the motion?
Put it in the motion that, that we want the town manager to move forward with, who is this?
Franklin King.
Franklin.
FK Roofing.
FK Roofing pending, uh, checking references to the town manager's satisfaction.
Yeah.
Yep.
So moved.
And I can communicate those, I can communicate them, the references.
Sure, just blast them out to us in email, this is what I have, and, just informational, this is what I found, and this is how I'm moving forward.
I hope it's true, I hope it's true.
Do we need to adjust the amount, like, say that we'd accept the?
Well, that's his bid.
That's the bid.
Yeah, that's the bid we're accepting, and extra will be extra.
Yeah, extra will be extra, right.
I'm, I'm going, I'm on your page this time, girls, I have nothing, that's gonna come out, twenty-six thousand.
I'd like to not, like, maybe enter into a contract with them, not to exceed.
So town manager, no, town, so let's, so where are we? We have a motion, cause Sherry.
I tried to say so moved, cause I forgot how to.
And, but the, so it's the, we wanna accept the Franklin King roofing? FK Roofing, uh, bid pending, town manager's, uh, checking references to his satisfaction.
Yeah.
And town manager to negotiate contracts as in the best interest of the town. How's that?
Not to exceed our budget.
However you want to do that.
Yeah.
Second.
Yep.
All right, uh.
God, I gotta.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Yeah, let's hope that they're reputable, and that's a good number, cause that's, that's a good number.
We like that.
All right, um, and Amanda, sorry, that was messy one, is that okay? All right.
Can I just, that's a really good.
She just touched us, she lost anyway.
What is our?
God, I apologize, I didn't hear that, hang on.
Just, what is our budget for that project?
What's our budget for that?
What do we have saved?
It was like forty? About forty thousand.
And that's in a capital?
Forty-eighty.
We've been saving for that, right?
It's just less than fifty.
Okay.
But that's, and that's for that.
Fire station capital.
Fight for the building, generally.
Right, that's not just the roof.
No.
Okay. But the roof is the most needed thing right now. Okay.
According to our fire chief, had some leakages this winter, and the shingles are looking pretty good.
Yeah, this time, yeah. Thirty years, shingles made thirty years.
Yeah.
That's incredible, actually. It almost never happens. Um, lucky to get twenty. Uh, okay, and next. Okay, and next, select board to review, item seven, select board to review Hardwick L V R T connector loop recommendations from the planning commission that were generally accepted on the April twentieth meeting, and this is, I, to whoever put this in our packet, thank you very much for the reminder, because it's really helpful, and basically, this is something that we need to formally do, formally accept in order to continue with the USDA funds that were.
So there's an explanation on the back page.
Yeah.
But it, yeah.
Which is, which was great, so appreciate that, but in order to pivot the, those grant funds.
So, do you wanna just, should I just say it out loud?
Yeah.
So the USDA agreed to allow the town to use the remaining funds from a community facilities grant.
Which is a match for.
For the old.
Was for the rail trail, wasn't it?
Rail trail, right, because the state took it over, and so we had funds in that account, and we wanted to use those funds for the bridge project.
Yep.
And so they allowed us to use that with the caveat, or whatever, that we would create a link to the L V R T.
Which we wanna do anyway.
That's why we worked out that, did that whole thing with the connector loop plan, and that's why we laid all that stuff out, but they wanted to see it in our minutes that we've made a motion to commit to doing that.
By the time we get to the library, there'll be a tunnel, we'll be able to go.
I mean, Danny's done digging, there'll be a tunnel.
So we need to.
Did I ask what the loop is?
We need to.
We reviewed the loop and we generally accepted it.
The loop.
We already accepted it, I just asked.
The loop is, you come right off the Memorial Park, you come down Main Street, and you turn right onto, what is it? It's Island there, yeah, and then you go to the Daniel's building.
Bring people around to the other side of the bridge, so that.
You park your bike there, you walk across the bridge, and you enjoy down.
Set it right, your bike down.
Down Main Street behind the park.
We just make that.
Oh, and we need to add Santania, it's gonna, that is a really good, no, I don't say this often, really good idea.
So I can.
Because I've been watching the congestion, because they've done a lot of bikes, and of course we got dump trucks, and it's not helping, but.
I'm quite impressed with the volume of people that are using that rail trail.
Oh, yeah, so I can, I can motion that we accept the Hardwick L V R T connector loop recommendations from the planning commission?
Perfect.
Second?
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, that's everyone, so motion carries.
Those will be, those will be done when we're done caving.
Right.
Yeah, that's gonna be great, it is not fun to bike in.
And the thing is, when, yeah, we also need to not push people to take that route until there's a bridge to come across and to down there.
Yeah, that'd be another thing, I forgot about that.
Well, they're not gonna take it, I mean, ultimately, they will, look at what they're doing now, they're doing it all the time, every day.
So.
There were nine people from Concord, Mass. that came in a group down Main Street, you know, chasing pictures.
Well, for now, they can just be legal.
Yeah, there was, there was four or five bikes at, at the end eating, and then there was four or five bikes at the diner.
Right, right, yeah, people are actually coming here and doing their business.
There's a lot of people, I saw, the other thing is, is just constant parking down to the trailhead down by the river now, which I know people, if ever used to be that way.
They're using the one up here too, on sixteen.
The one on sixteen, right, every, this is not Hardwick, but Elmer Pond Road?
Yeah.
There's cars parked there, they're not supposed to be there, they're parked right, it's right in the road.
Fishing and putting a boat.
Well, they're parking right in the road right there, right through the road, they're not even parking down to the fishing thing, so, there's definitely a huge, huge amount of interest in it right now, I hope it stays.
And it's a good thing that we have, we do have places for people to park, and we do, just have this, you helped us get that on Creamery Road, there's quite a lot of parking there right now.
There's very nice parking area there.
As soon as they actually correct their maps and have our trailheads on them and the correct spots, that we've been working on for a year, yeah, it'll be even better, people will actually know.
There's a lot of people working on it right now, I know.
I, the way I look at it is, out of a hundred people, it's like herding cats, out of a hundred people, maybe ten of those people will use, will follow the directions.
Well, I just did, dump truck, and every, at least twenty-five percent, if not more, the people walk up that side of the sidewalk, see the big sign says sidewalk closed, see the crosswalk coming across, see the dump truck with just a little bit of room between the fence, construction fence, and they still walk right up to it.
Right along the street.
Right up to it, tell them that fence right, it's getting into the mirror, and I'm like, I don't get it, I don't get it.
Well, I'm, all day on Main Street, people crisscross across the road and don't use the crosswalks constantly.
I'm like, boy.
People who don't, are not capable of walking fast as well, don't bother to use the crosswalk.
Right, it's like, you know, these people, the guy had two bags, had bags, and I'm like, what made you think this was gonna be?
Someone pull out of the diner the wrong way.
Oh, yeah. It's an ongoing thing.
And there's a sign there.
This is crazy town.
Isn't it?
Oh, babe.
People stopping at the yellow light.
Did we all, we passed that motion, right?
We did.
Ask Amanda. It's spitting and spluttering about people are down.
I was just gonna, can I just add something really quickly?
To that?
Super quickly to that, can we put something in the kiosk?
Oh, that's a good question.
Can we put something in the kiosk directing people downtown?
We can't put anything on this trail side of the thing, because the L V R T has rules about what gets put in there.
Wow, really?
Can we just?
What?
Okay, so we can put one on the veterans' park side?
Possibly.
That's great.
But we also need to make changes to that kiosk so that it's actually.
So you can reach it?
Yeah.
Okay.
But we're on it.
I wanna put the, I'm still looking for a key for it.
Yeah, this is probably.
I wanna put the hinge on the top.
Yeah.
Just change the hinge.
Why, where?
The hinge is on the bottom.
It's on the bottom.
So you have to be a giant to be able to get up there and lower the thing.
How much should we spend on that?
We got a grant for it.
Very good.
That was a grant that Sean and Justin did for us.
Got it.
Okay, all right, moving on to select board reports.
Oh, okay, really quick, the Equity Committee has been doing bi-monthly listens and share sessions, the last one we did was with the Hardwick Health Center about health and equity, and there were about six people who attended, but it was a really great conversation, so we're gonna have, we'll probably have another one in August or September after the height of the summer, but they've been really great, that's my report.
Great. I will say that Yellow Barn, what do you call it, the, it's not hazard mitigation, it's the.
Yeah.
CAP, corrective action plan for soils, the testing happened last week, Friday, Thursday,